The meeting of the VIA Board of Trustees will now come to order. Mr. Lee, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
If I have your attention.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call on President/CEO Jeff Arnt for any report.
First of all, on behalf of Larry Johnson, who could not be here tonight, he asked that I make sure that everyone be aware of and know that they are invited to the 2013 White Kane Day Celebration in San Antonio, which is on Tuesday, October 15th, from 1:30 to 3:00 PM, Main Plaza, and that VIA will be recognized during that event, hopefully for the advances that we've made in our VIA trans service as well as our fixed route service to people with disabilities. So, he wants to make sure everybody knows that we are invited. Secondly, just passed out a report from the Standard and Poor's Rating Services Agency, and I'll just read you the very beginning. "Standard and Poor's Rating Services assigned its AAA long-term rating to VIA Metropolitan Transit Advanced Transportation District, Texas Series 2013 Sales Tax Revenue Improvement and Refund Bonds. The outlook is stable. The rating reflects our view of the ATD's deep and diverse service area economy, strong history of sales tax collection since its initial collection in 2005, fiscal 2012 audited sales tax revenue coverage equating to 9.98 times future maximum annual debt service, and strong management and financial practices with the proven ability to address economic and subsequent revenue declines." And just FYI, the cash flow, the plan, the pro forma that they evaluated did include all of our capital improvement program, including the streetcar project, and the operating expenses associated with that. So, we're very happy to see that we got their highest rating. And we will have a report from our FAs a little bit later on the next steps in the process.
Thank you for that. We look forward to that report.
We're happy to report that SWADA, the Southwest Transportation Agency, provided or awarded via the GoVIAVia smartphone app, I'll say that right yet, GoVIAVia smartphone app their Spotlight Award for Technology earlier this month at their annual meeting. We also, this afternoon or about noon, SAMCO had their luncheon. John Barton, the Deputy Executive Director of Tech dot, was the main presenter. And at that function this afternoon, Clay Smith on our staff was awarded a Lifetime Achievement Award. Clay, are you out there? There you go. So, Clay, congratulations. And as good as that is, what was even more pleasing is when John Barton reported that he is, quote, "sick of hearing Clay talk about how much he likes working at VIA." That's good news, Clay. We like that. And my last announcement is that Mass Transit Magazine annually awards a Top 40 Under 40. It's their annual opportunity to recognize outstanding young individuals making a name in the public transit industry. They recognize individuals for their contributions and who have shown a capacity for innovation, demonstrated leadership, and a commitment to making an impact in transit. And we have one of those 40 Under 40 among us, our Chief Development Officer, Brian Buchanan. Congratulations, Brian.
Were we able to verify that he is under 40?
We have asked for his birth certificates. He is an American under 40.
The gray hair only comes from the streetcar.
And that is my report.
Thank you so much, Mr. Arnt.
And he's a good man, too.
Before we continue, I'd like to recognize, in attendance this evening, is the Northwest Vista Government Class with their professor, former Councilman Robert Marbet. Welcome. All right, couple of changes to the order of the meeting in order to improve the flow, given the high amount of audience here. We'll take up our Consent Agenda next, and then our next item will be Citizens to be Heard, and we'll follow that with Item 10, which is the Modern Streetcar Briefing in Action. So, I will move now for...
Move for approval of Consent Agenda, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Consent Agenda is approved. Okay, now, Citizens to be Heard.
Madam Chairwoman, we have 16 citizens to be heard. Each citizen will be afforded three minutes to speak. As your name is called, you may come up to the front to make your comments. If you'd prefer to make your comments from where you sit, please raise your hand, and a microphone will be brought to you. Pat DiGiovanni.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. My name is Pat DiGiovanni. I'm here as CEO of Central Partnership, and I'm here to reaffirm our support for VIA's proposed modern streetcar system. Central Partnership was created to envision and foster a vibrant and prosperous downtown that benefits the entire San Antonio community. Modern Streetcar, if done well, can be a symbol of vibrancy and mark an important step towards a comprehensive transportation network that benefits the entire community. Modern Streetcar, if done well, can benefit downtown residents, workers, local and out-of-town visitors, and business and property owners. It can connect people to the places they want to be, spur infill and new development, enhance the pedestrian experience, and make our downtown experience special. As you consider whether to approve staff's recommendation for the LPA, we encourage you to implement the recommendations of the panel of experts Centro convened back in May. Their feedback, which we shared with the VIA staff, helps define what a well-done, successful system would look like. The first recommendation is to implement the system in phases, with top priority given to construction of a smaller, high-quality route where destination points exist and development is already in progress. VIA's proposed north-south route fits the description very well. The panel's second recommendation is to implement a complete street design, which looks beyond the tracks to capture the complete pedestrian and rider experience along the right-of-way, along the entire right-of-way. Elements such as landscaping, lighting, seating, and wayfinding are all part of this concept. It is crucial that VIA, the city, and the county understand the importance of this concept, seek to identify the funding sources and build these improvements into the construction timeline for the streetcar system. Very simply, do it once, and do it very well. Our third recommendation is to maintain flexibility and to work diligently to understand the impact of route options on downtown employers and the clients they serve. VIA staff has acknowledged that the environmental and engineering work to be done over the next year could lead to modifications to the LPA. We encourage them to engage stakeholders in the process and keep them well-informed. We cannot stress enough how important it is to have a plan to address business disruption during construction. Central Partnership is prepared to play a lead role in facilitating discussions with VIA and its project team on behalf of our members and property owners in the downtown public improvement district. Finally, we want to reaffirm our commitment to play a role in raising money from the private sector to support modern streetcar. We will be more successful in the effort if VIA incorporates our recommendations into your plans. We appreciate the time that the VIA staff, especially your CEO, Jeff Arnt, has shared with us, and we also want to thank the VIA staff and board for joining the city, the county, and Tech dot on this important initiative.
Christina Salazar.
Good afternoon. I'm Christina Basoldua Salazar, Director of Government Affairs and Leadership for the San Antonio Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. On behalf of our President and CEO, Ramiro Cavazos, and our Chairman of the Board, Alex Bruseño, and our almost 1,000 members, we represent the interests of San Antonio's 40,000 minority, local, small, and women-owned businesses. We, at the Hispanic Chamber, believe that effective and reliable public transportation helps stimulate the economy and keeps commerce flowing as it provides job opportunities for our community. It is our opinion that VIA's downtown streetcar project will create economic benefits, improve air quality, and promote sustainability and livability throughout San Antonio. It will serve as a catalyst for transforming downtown and neighborhood districts, ultimately creating a multimodal transit system for our community. Cities throughout Texas, such as Dallas and Fort Worth, are embracing modern streetcar systems as it creates a green form of transportation that reduces congestion. Transfer projects, such as VIA's downtown streetcar project, can foster development and provide valued connections within the community. More transportation options encourage mobility. Increased mobility provides access to opportunities for our businesses. As America's first Hispanic Chamber since 1929, we have been an advocate on behalf of our hard-working San Antonio business community. We fully support VIA's streetcar project as it will strengthen economic development and grow throughout our city, especially for our minority, local, small, and women-owned businesses. We strongly believe that this will be beneficial to our entire growing city. Thank you.
Manuel Garcia.
Okay, I think you had the right alternative is correct for each downtown. They could most in cities showers and the Alamo. But however, whatever, if there's a future accident, I'm not sure. But however, however, with these streetcars that can dance and forward, I'm not sure what this side is going to be. However, for each downtown, which still has the right alternative for streetcars. And there's also another reason, and there's also another reason for safety with these streetcars. But... I...thank you.
Ferris Hodge.
My name is Ferris Hodge Jr., and I want to...first, I want y'all to look at my t-shirt. Don't mess with Texas. Y'all need to give one of them. Now, I will not never support that streetcar. The streetcar is a joke. It's a pipe dream. It's something that Judge Wolf won in the City Council, and they barking up the wrong tree. I'll tell you a little story, even if I run out of time. We went hunting one day, 1960. The dogs running real fast, tree, walking up the tree. My grandfather said, "Mr. Ted, do you see anything up there?" "No, Mr. Joe, I don't see anything. Where's my dog?" "Right here, turn him around." He popped the dog, said, "Now, you go hunt." Boom! Went, jumped, another tree. "You see anything up there?" "It's a poon up there." The dog was barking up the wrong tree. VIA is barking up the wrong tree. Judge Wolf in Bell County is barking up the wrong tree. The City Council is barking up the wrong tree. What we need y'all to do is buy more buses. The 200 and 300 series buses need to go right now. They bouncing and everything. The Primo bus is doing good, but the sixes are too hard to sit on. And now, what I really want to talk about, you need to give your retirees a 15% pay raise. They haven't had a pay raise in five years. Your part-time drivers did not get no pay raise last year. Your full-time drivers only got a 3% pay raise. You went up on our bus fare. Why? Why would y'all have that thing last month or this month, and you spent over $60, you spent seventy-seven thousand dollars for that? VIA is going to be in debt five or 10 years from now. La Lawson, and y'all know who he is. And y'all need to be voted in, instead of put in by Judge Wolf, put in by the mayor and his group. I don't have a chance to get in there. You know, y'all barking up the wrong tree. Y'all need to wake up and smell the coffee. You know, when we were small, my grandmother had coffee, and they cook coffee. And she said, "The coffee's ready." And that coffee sure smelled good. If y'all really wanted to help us, Villa, quit barking up the wrong tree. Get your mind in the right area. I talked to Mr. Bill Martin earlier about y'all barking up the wrong tree. I haven't talked to Mary Brusinho. She have property somewhere. Mr. Lou Miller have property somewhere. All that was on the news. And I read everything. Don't think y'all doing something, and then we don't know what's going on. It was some horses one day, just riding up and down the street. And they had blinders on their eyes. They couldn't see to the left, couldn't see to the right. I think you guys helped line us on y'all's side. So, I'm going to stay with the end of five minutes, but I'm going to write y'all a 10-page letter while y'all are barking up the wrong tree.
George Rodriguez.
Gentlemen, by now, I guess you know who I am. But I will reiterate once again that we have voted this twice down. And here we go again. You're going to vote over what the will of the people is, in complete and total violation of the Constitution. What you want to do is, you're not representing the people. You're representing special interests, all these suited people sitting behind me, in the Hispanic Chamber. You know what we would call them in the 1970s? Bendidos. Because that's what has happened in today's society. The people that were the radicals of the 70s are now the folks that are running the show. They are the folks that think they're in charge. Everybody from the Castros to Henry Munoz. I mean, for crying out loud, folks. And their parents fought for democracy, and they're not giving it to us. We have voted against it. And it's not a question that we're against mass transportation. What's wrong with buses? They can run anywhere. They can go anywhere. The city is already $50 million in the hole. Now, you're going to put us worse than the hole? And you know who's going to end up paying for it? We are. You know, I loved the article this morning in the paper, because Mr. Castro, in his wisdom, Harvard affirmative action that he is, he goes and makes the comment and says, "Well, it's a combination of money. It's city, county, VIA, and federal." Well, I've got news for you. All of that money comes out of our pockets. You know, if Central thinks it's such a great idea, why don't they pull their rich people's money and buy it and do it themselves? Why? Because they themselves know this is a boondoggle. They themselves know it. Shame on you for continuing this facade of it being a public, a public hearing, because in the end, we know how you're going to vote, just like they did recently with the homosexual ordinance. That's fine. That's fine. But there are ramifications. We want you to know that. The people, the silent majority of San Antonio has woken up. Okay? I promise you, we have woken up. And we are going after those that are the elected officials, and then we're coming after the appointed ones as well. Okay? So, I'm just telling you, this is not a threat. This is a fact. We will not be ignored anymore. And this is what you've done. Quite simply, ignored the will of the people. Thank you.
Maria Moreno.
Hello, my name is Maria Moreno. Yes, I want to say that the bus system really works very well. I ride the buses. I feel if y'all want to put money into other things, try to get seatbelts on those buses, because sometimes, you know, they stop all of a sudden, some going to touch in front, whatever. But that's really all I have to say. I'll make it short. Thank you.
David Benavides.
Good morning, VIA Board. I mean, good afternoon, VIA Board. I'm here to present some history to those VIA Board members that were not serving in 2009 and 2010. In 2009, 2010, there was a change to the vesting on the VIA pension plan. All employees increased the amount of deduction by 1% into the defined benefit pension plan. The plan outcome was to help raise the sustainability of the plan. Yet, the VIA Board approved lowering the vesting of VIA employees from 10 years with 100% to only five years with 100%. According to VIA management, the reason for lowering the 100% vesting was to encourage employees to seek employment at VIA. The reality is, the plan has changed, because now in 2013, we no longer have a defined benefit plan. It appears the true reason for lowering the vesting to five years 100% was to vest certain sixth-digit-figure income employees, not a career lifetime employee. Point two, health care. In 2007, there was an amendment to the pension plan where retired employees with 25 years of service would receive $250 a month, which was then the full premium for the employee only on VIA care. Now, in 2013, the increase is almost 100%, with no adjustment for limited-income retired employees. Point three, VIA Board members' statement regarding in 1974. In conclusion, it was stated that ATU Local 694, our local VIA union, was on strike in 1974. This was stated in a meeting months back. The fact is, per record and court document, we were in a continuous meeting and not on strike. I would like that corrected in a minute. Thank you.
Our next speaker has time yielded to her from Juan Fernandez for a total of six minutes. Yolanda Benavides.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Ms. Bruseno, VIA Board members and officers, Mr. Arnt, and also VIA management and VIA Vice Presidents. I am Yolanda A. Benavides, spouse of a retired VIA employee. This evening, I will share with all of you two focal points regarding VIA employees, active and retired, and via budget and monies, with the audience consisting of VIA retirees, active VIA employees, and the community VIA serves, that is represented by other concerned citizens. This evening, firstly, I will share with you my reasons for addressing this forum. I, as a spouse of a 39-year VIA employee who is now retired, have witnessed the sad and unjust situation VIA has placed our family in. Retirees of VIA are faced with a very perplexing problem. Was a 3% raise, followed by subsequent small planned raises, really worth giving up a defined benefit pension plan for a 401K? From my perspective, the answer is no. I, as a retired educator, stand firm with other educators to remain and sustain a defined benefit plan as pension. We defend it to fellow educators, fellow administrators, school boards, and most importantly, to the Texas Legislature. We do so with positive results and got a COLA of 3%. If I may quote our mayor, several people have already, Julian Castro, he said this at the Iowa meeting back on September 15th. "We expect you to work hard, but when you do, we reward that hard work with opportunity." In addition, he stated, "I invested in myself, but fundamentally, I reached my dream because you invested in me, because the American people invested in me." That is America. That's what's great about this nation. That is the blueprint for success in the 21st century. He believes, as so should all of us, in the American dream. To be successful American people, such as you, the VIA Board, and VIA management, must believe in the active and retired employees who are laying and were laying the foundation for VIA and the 21st century. Again, I ask, was it worth giving up a defined benefit pension plan for a 401K? Secondly, this evening, another reason for addressing this group, I, as a housewife, mother, and grandmother, can only imagine a budget that works with billions of dollars and six-figure incomes. Does VIA and San Antonio need $70 million to complete a light rail streetcar system? Furthermore, does VIA management require a six-figure income of over $100,000 to get the job done? From my perspective, again, the answer is no. VIA retirees struggle on a limited income with only a $600 supplement for over 12 months, not a COLA, nor a decrease in health insurance premiums to offset that limited pension. Yes, the recession of 2008 has affected all of us. Yet, now, five years later, in 2013, we are not 100% sound financially, as per our actuary of the company. Yet, who is? The time is now to address these needs. First, a pension with a permanent raise, as has been addressed before, not just a supplement. Second, health insurance benefit with a premium that is realistic and allows for reasonable deductible. Lastly, if I may quote another CEO from San Antonio, Peter M. Holt, he also spoke, and he had an article in the paper on Sunday, September 16th. "As we look back to prevent future devocals, like the Lehman Brothers, I'm sure you've heard of, on the stock market, bringing the focus back to values and promoting a corporate ethic based on caring, and a culture where everybody wins, can bring only positive results." In conclusion, we can and we must address these aforementioned needs for the good of retirees and active employees, but even more so for the good of VIA and the good of San Antonio. Thank you for your attention.
Damon Mason.
Okay, many salutations. It is I, Damon Mason. I'm concerned about a lack of a satisfactory epilogue to a following subject matter which has been isolated below as follows. I am of the perspective that Route 14 can and should be operated a lot more dexterely than it currently is. To this end, I have composed a proposal, complete with an treaty for VIA, to seriously consider its merit in implementation. Quick and dirty version, Route 14 needs to avail Randolph Park Road as an intermediate destination. The northbound Route 14 coach needs to follow Loop 368 to its junction with Loop 410 and head east to Randolph Park Road. At this point, the short-haul range terminates and reverses course south toward downtown by availing westbound Loop 410 access ramp, and then the Loop 368 egress. Meanwhile, the northbound long-haul Route 14 coach resume its course to Nacapaz by traveling on the northbound French Road to Wheaton Road prior to reversing course. This way, it becomes possible to access southbound I-35 and its interchange for 410. I recommend that the coach stay in the right lane so it can make the best use of Egress 166, along with both the FM 2252 egress, without the coach having to make what I call a leap of faith. What I mean by leap of faith, under current routing, the anti-clockwise loop reveals the access ramp to westbound Loop 410 near Randolph Park Road. Which is not bad, except for the fact that the FM 2252 egress is an unselling proximity to where the ramp from southbound I-35 has two lanes alongside the two lanes westbound 410 already has. I do not like the idea any vehicle leaping across lanes of traffic, because it's very poor planning on the part of the driver. If the vehicle in question is a capacity passenger vehicle, such as a school bus or a mainline transit coach with full passengers, that is extremely dangerous and irresponsible, because I have seen motorists actively attempting to obstruct the mainline coach, and that vehicular accident on the highway can be quite messy. Both are clearing the wrecked vehicles and the bottleneck of people looking at the accident scene. VIA, please heed my counsel to abolish the aforementioned leap of faith toward the FM 2252 egress from westbound 410. That maneuver is not only dangerous, but completely unnecessary, especially when urban transit routes can be easily drawn to avoid the need for it. You can have the westbound Route 509 coach, the anti-claway zuper, avail the Loop 365 You can have the westbound Route 509 coach, the anti-claway zuper avail the Loop 365 egress and then turn north onto Perrin Bala along, turning west on the anti-clockwise Loop 410 front row. So anyway, I have a copy of this here, so of course you can read it at your leisure. Glad you for your time.
James Dodarte.
Thank you. Good afternoon, VIA board members. Good to see many of you at the SAMCO luncheon today. I am responding to the proposed resolution I submitted a few months ago. We were very disappointed that VIA board chose not to adopt the resolution to support uninterrupted access across rail lines at San Motor and Freo City Road. I was surprised being that SAI SD, Port San Antonio, your local ATU 694, and recently University Health Systems and many other associations have chosen to support this I was told that VIA chooses not to engage in conflicts of interest between government entities. I am having a problem understanding why VIA, who is supposed to serve the travel needs of San Antonio citizens, will not support this initiative since it is in their economic interest. VIA, you are basically saying that you will not provide transportation with minimal delays, ensure rider safety, save on fuel waste, and help the EPA, save on bus operator clock time, and overall improve the infrastructure of the bus service. I feel that this is a conflict of interest to support the initiative since VIA, I'm sorry, VIA, you're saying that it is a conflict of interest to support this initiative since you're vying for transportation funding from our local government. However, we are not asking for funding. We are merely asking that VIA support this initiative and do whatever they can to stop delays at San Motor and Freo City Road. Again, VIA, you have chosen not to adopt the resolution. We would request maybe a letter of support so that we can take to our elected officials. I have one more request that I'd like to add. This is totally different. I would like to see a member of the American Disabilities Act, the Star Shuttle, and Yellow Cab as delegates on this board so they can see what is going on. Thank you.
Mark Kelman.
Good evening. My name is Mark Kelman. I'm a registered architect. In San Antonio, I just happen to have an interest in large urban systems. I've made another diagram for y'all to look at, and it has to do with the fact that you've set boundaries of the downtown at Martin Street and Cesar Chavez to the north and to the south. I'm starting this discussion with the fact that there will be people using this route and how may we most accommodate the people. So there's the Alamo right there on the diagram that y'all published in the paper last week. If you consider the distance of walk between the Alamo South to Commerce Street, a sort of a comfortable walk for most everybody, we'll use that as a marker. The reason that it's so important to me to maintain that kind of thing because everybody can do it, that means maybe people in wheelchairs, that means children, maybe old people, maybe accessible challenged people, most everybody can do the length of Alamo Plaza, plus you have a nice visual memory on the topic of how long of a walk that is. As I turned the route down Nueva Street instead of Cesar Chavez, I have hatched an area that is about that distance. So from Nueva Street, I can walk south to Chavez about the same distance that it takes for you to walk Alamo Plaza. If I go north, I can make it to the Bear County Courthouse in the same amount of walking distance. So what I've done is made this diagram specifically on the topic of the walking distance of Alamo Plaza. It's pretty easy that way. Now here's the real clue is that Nueva Street, if you put the streetcar down, Nueva Street will not jeopardize any of the development on Chavez Street, which is what everybody's been bragging about. If they put the railcar on Chavez Street, it will spur development. Well, if you put it on Nueva Street, it will not harm any possibility of development on Chavez Street. The big difference is you've made one-half the walking distance between Chavez and all of the elements there that are black squares on the map. And it just happens to be San Antonio. If you walk from Alamo Plaza West, you will capture most of all the events that you want to see in the downtown. It's just strung out to the east and west that way. So the most accessible way to do that seems to be Nueva Street. Also, if, once it's all built out, you will notice that Cesar Chavez will have a massive traffic problem, and you'll be sitting there in the streetcar waiting for the lights to change or the traffic to unclock, whereas Nueva Street is much lighter because it's not a direct way straight across the city. Thank you very much.
Mel Feldman.
Thank you for letting us speak. This is only the second time I can recall that the public was allowed to speak and raise its voice for or against this project. Every other meeting, it's been you against us. You often hear of the Alamo Dome being thought of as a white elephant. This project is an entire herd of elephants of various colors. I don't know what possessed you guys to even go ahead with this project, something scientific. I was going to consult the guys on the Big Bang Theory and maybe they have an answer for me. I figured maybe somewhere in your childhood, you were forced to eat broccoli, and now you're forcing this on us. I mean, you talk about a vibrant downtown, you need people. How do you get people? You have buses running all night, all night you have them running, and various streets that do not have any bus service whatsoever. Nobody here rides the buses. Patrick Giovanni doesn't do it, the Hispanic Chamber doesn't do it, the People at the Widdy, nobody rides, they all ride SUVs or cars. I'm a real bus rider, and I'll tell you what you really need. You need more buses with comfortable seats. The Primos are not comfortable. And since when do you put three bikes on a bus? That's just never heard of before. Let me tell you this right now. You put up fancy bus stops, they're not functional. They don't protect you from the heat, they don't protect you from the rain, they just look fancy, you know? A fancy suit doesn't make you a great guy. Same thing with the bus stops. And also, I had a meeting recently with Keith Ham and Charlie Gonzalez, excuse me, about a federal regulation. You do not have to have a visible disability item to have them lower the bus. You don't have to have a cane, a crutch, a walker, whatever. They should do this automatically. You don't have to do it at every stop. Your biggest complaint was that it takes up time. That's why you have empty bus stops. They make up the time that they lower the bus on the empty bus stops. If you can put on a bike and a wheelchair, you can certainly lower the bus. It's not only for the handicapped, the highly morbidly obese, it's parents with carriages, strollers, shoppers, et cetera, et cetera. Just before my meeting with Mr. Gonzalez, there was a guy getting right here on Cypress by the Walgreens. He had a brace on every knee, had a walker with stuff in the walker, he was obese, and he was not a youngster. They didn't lower the bus. That should have been an automatic, you don't have to ask for it. The people in this city are highly complacent. I am speaking for the voiceless. Trust me, they don't have a voice. I hope I can take that up for them. Again, good night. Thank you.
Ed Cross.
Good evening. My name is Ed Cross. I'm a property owner along the routes that you are considering tonight. I'm standing in support of the streetcar. I also want to thank you for the time and effort that you're putting into your consideration and to listening to the citizens. I think that's the proper thing for you to do. I also stand willing to write checks for the streetcar. I've said this publicly, and I want to say it publicly again tonight. My partners and I, who own those properties and who have built the housing downtown, stand ready to support VIA financially for the streetcar. We'll support it either for paying for tracks, we'll pay for bus stops, we'll pay for great streets. We stand ready to support you, and we hope that you vote in favor of this streetcar item tonight. Thank you.
Barbara McMillan.
Hi, my name is Barbara McMillan. I support Route 6 with the modifications. I particularly like Flores where it goes down to Cesar Chavez, and I like St. Mary's because St. Mary's will pick up passengers from South Town and King William. And I like the streetcar going up North Alamo also, because maybe that might allow more protected, two protected bike lanes on Broadway later, thinking in the future. So I do like Route 6 with modifications. I think that the route is great because it covers many bases. The Flores route also gives you the access to the main plaza, the city hall, the city office buildings, courthouse, et cetera, the cathedral, the Spanish governor's palace. And then the Martin Chavez, Pecan area will give you a lot of office towers and residential as well as Chavez. So there's the word transformation, transformative comes in, that's where you're transforming the downtown, you're going to add, you're going to enhance the business area that's already over there on Martin and Pecan. There will be more potential vacant lots for more residential, that will mean more people downtown. Hopefully, there will be more apartments for UTSA students who are downtown, then the students could ride the streetcar. When the line is expanded later, if you look at the comprehensive plan, the neighborhoods surrounding the downtown will have access, maybe they will have circulator buses in the neighborhoods, or they will be able to walk to a station, north, south, east, and west, and they will be able to come back downtown, and they will be coming in and then accessing the streetcar. Maybe the downtown will become a destination for locals like it used to be decades ago, so there'll be a lot of people on the sidewalks. There are 30% vacancies in the storefronts downtown. I think it's exciting to think about what could go in there. It will be a place to go. Also, baby boomers are going to get older and will need driving, need access to transportation. Also, there's a young Hispanic population that will be coming up that will need access to transportation, to jobs, so that's really important in the future. We need to get the trunk lines in after the streetcar comes in because the trunk lines take residents to, will take residents to medical and university and other main institutions.
Roman Peña.
Good afternoon, VIA board members. How are you doing, Mr. Gomita? My name is Roman Peña, and I am a business merchant of the downtown El Mercado. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. On behalf of the merchants of the El Mercado and our residents council that I am chairman, I'm here to tell you that we advocate and support the modern streetcar project because it will be beneficial to local residents who cannot afford to pay for parking and can enjoy the sights. Great for tourists and locals alike to visit the cultural and entertainment venues that we have here in the downtown area. It enhances economic equality and opportunity for small business entrepreneurs to participate in this endeavor like ourselves. It revitalizes the inner city and the west side of downtown. So we think that this project, of which you all have launched into it and you have a lot of support and also opposition, we think it's good for the community. And you are going to be voting on today of what will be probably something very, very important for the entire downtown and especially the western part of the city. You will have a big economic development there as your former chairman, or the chairman of the board, has said it many times, that this will be a renaissance of the west side with the center that is going to be developed right there by that building that you all have just acquired there in the downtown area. The east-west couplet around Commerce and Market Street was our first choice. We thought that that had a ready-made base of ridership that would make your project succeed right off the bat. Now, the chances of succeeding in this alternative six, it's really something that you're going to test as you go along because I have been there 40 years, and I don't see too much on Martin Street, and we don't see too much ridership along Cesar Chavez. But your experts have recommended that that's the best project, and you hired them for that, and I'm sure they worked on it very hard, and they studied everything to come up with that conclusion. So your decision today probably will be the recommendation of your experts. Thank you very much.
Albert Caddisalas.
Good evening, board members. Thank you very much for your service. My name is Albert Caddisalas. I'm the assistant to the president and the director for external affairs at the University of Texas at San Antonio. I'm here today to basically reinforce what our students have already shared with the VIA staff and the VIA board members back in late July. Our UTSA student body president, Zach Dunn, has taken exams this week, so he couldn't be here. But basically, in his testimony back in July, he provided appreciation to VIA for including on all six routes, the original routes, the UTSA downtown campus connected to the rest of the downtown area. Our three major activity centers that UTSA is very interested in, of course, in the downtown area are the downtown campus, the Institute of Texan Cultures at Hemisfer Park, and also the Alamo Dome where we have various activities such as football and graduation ceremonies. The downtown campus does have a role in helping transform the downtown area. Access to streetcar service could be a catalyst to further assist UTSA in this role. Last year, UTSA reported 100,000 VIA student rides between the main campus and the downtown campus on bus routes 93 and 94. So yes, buses are being used, particularly by our students. Also, park and ride, VIA, you all provide bus service for students, averaging about 3,000 students per game. So thank you for providing the discounts to our students. We have 6,000 students at the downtown campus and about 1,000 employees at the downtown campus and at the Institute of Texan Cultures. Over 130,000 people visited the Institute of Texan Cultures in 2012. ITC, the Institute of Texan Cultures, hosts the annual Asian Festival and the Texas Folk Life Festival. 56,000 people attended the UTSA inaugural football game in the year 2011. This year, the first home game against Oklahoma State University, we had over 40,000 people attend. So we're now playing in Conference USA, which means bigger teams, better teams, and more attendees at the Alamo Dome. So yes, the Alamo Dome is a major venue attraction. We've got 40,000 people this past May who attended UTSA commencement ceremonies in the Alamo Dome. This coming December, we will also host commencement ceremonies. We will be conferring our 100,000 degree in December. So imagine San Antonio 10 to 20 years from now, more people at the downtown campus, more people in Hemisfer Park, and more people attending events in the Alamo Dome. The streetcar system can play a role in shaping land use, in attracting economic development, and providing an alternative mode of transportation. A prime example of this is the Tucson Modern Streetcar System in Arizona, where they partnered with the University of Arizona. My time is running short, but I just want to say thank you very much, and there are great models out there in the country. And UTSA, we look forward to being a partner with VIA. Thank you.
Jackie Gorman.
Good evening, board members. I'm Jackie Gorman, and I am the executive director of Sage San Antonio for Growth on the East Side. As many of you know, Sage's mission is to be a catalyst for economic development that mutually benefits the quality of life for individuals, families, and neighborhoods and businesses on San Antonio's east side. In support of that mission, we feel that a workable transportation infrastructure is critical to the ultimate revitalization of this storied community. To that end, late last year, the Board of Directors of Sage passed a resolution urging VIA Metropolitan Transit to include three eastside routes in their planning for the extension of the urban streetcar system. These routes would connect the eastside's largest employer, Fort Sam Houston, These routes would connect the east side's largest employer, Fort Sam Houston, our world-class educational institution, Saint Phillips College, and our state-of-the-art entertainment venue, the AT&amp;T Center in Freeman Coliseum, with downtown and the rest of greater San Antonio. Tonight, you'll make the final decision about the route for the eastern leg of Phase One of the system. Two of the routes that were originally proposed result in a barrier, both physical and economic, to future eastward expansion. At its August meeting, the Sage Board of Directors passed a second resolution on this topic urging VIA to select a route that runs along Cesar Chavez and ends at the Robert B. Thompson Transit Center. Subsequently, VIA staff has identified as preferred a route that meets our criteria. And we urge you to adopt the route recommended by staff for the eastern leg of the system. This is our resolution. Whereas, the streetcar alignment decision is critical to the future connectivity of the east side to the various routes this transportation mode will offer to the northwest and south. And whereas, the streetcar alignment on Commerce to Sunset Station fails to contemplate future expansion to the east side neighborhoods due to a lack of rail-grade separation infrastructure required for streetcar passage. And whereas, the streetcar alignment on Chavez to Labor and east on Montana to the Thompson Transportation Center is the only alignment that allows for future connectivity through current rail-grade separation infrastructure. And whereas, the streetcar alignment ending at the Thompson Transit Center provides connectivity of east side neighborhoods now and further in the future to the Convention Center and other local destinations such as the River Rock, South Town and Pearl District. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Directors of Sage strongly urges the Board of VIA to select as the route for the eastern leg of the urban streetcar system, the Chavez-Labor to Montana alignment that culminates at the Thompson Transit Center, which allows for future uninterrupted connectivity to the east side on Montana to east Commerce. Passed by the Sage Board of Directors on the 23rd day of August 2013.
Richard Fernandez.
Good evening, Board members and other guests. My name is Richard Fernandez. I'm a transplanted resident of San Antonio for five years. I'm also retired from the military, in the US Army, and native-born Texan. And I'm a native-born Texan. Now, I have, I was asked when I came in if I wanted to be heard and I initially said no, but having sat here and observed these proceedings, I find something very disturbing. When I was in high school, I was taught that we had a constitution where a nation of laws, power of the vote, voice of the people, government for the people by the people. And here I understand we've had this issue voted twice in the, in the negative by the citizens of San Antonio. And yet, we are ignoring the power of the vote and the voice of the people. This I find is disturbing. I enlisted in the military to serve my country, defend the Constitution, to defend these rights of the people, the voice of the people. And to see you here trample and ignore the voice of the people and the power of the vote, I find very, very tragic, to say the least, very disappointing. This is not the country I was raised in. This is not what I believe in. This is not what I stood in uniform to protect and defend. And I think that if we allow this to happen at this level, how long before it's adopted at the state and the federal level? And I think we have signs of that at the federal level at this time with the president trying to shove Obamacare down our throats and trying to institute gun laws that deteriorate our rights as citizens. So I would urge you to reconsider and to take the power of the vote and the voice of your citizens of San Antonio seriously and reconsider your stand on this issue. Thank you for your time.
Richard Perez.
Good afternoon, members of the VIA Board. My name is Richard Perez. I am the CEO of the San Antonio Chamber of Commerce. And I wanted to come by here to let you know that San Antonio Chamber of Commerce supports the concept of a downtown circulator system which incorporates streetcars. Our vision is that this important project will create a modern, multimodal transportation network that combines the importance of convenient mobility with the opportunity for economic development and revitalization in the downtown area. As far as we're concerned, it's that simple, it's that straightforward, and it's necessary for the citizens of this great community. Thank you.
Antonio Diaz.
I want to start this. Good evening. I am here, basically, I've been opposing this idea because again, as the gentleman stated, it's been voted down by, by the citizens, but I know that... It is a very underhanded way to continue on with this project, being that the ATD was constructed with the stipulation that the monies would not be used for light rail. And whether you wish to call it trolley, simply to sidestep it, it's still light rail because it's not carrying cargo or, or, it's not, it's not heavy rail. Still light rail. And, and by, Tech Dot having gotten in and given the money for this project to move forward and then for ATD to then recompensate out of that fund, I think Tom DeLei did the same thing with corporate money in order to, to fund Republican candidates and was convicted for that. But yet, I know because money, money talks, he, he just got off, I think recently, from that conviction. But the underhanded way does not escape us because we voted against this and yet it is still shoved down our throats. Because VIA is an entity, still is supposed to be a public entity, I believe so. And, and yet, it, it manifests itself as very private and now has shouldered this project and taken it out of the, the hands of the voters that don't want this project. The trolley is an antiquated system. My father said that there used to be a trolley system back in his day, back in the 30s. It used to be pulled along by, by horses. So that is what I think of it. It's, it's an antiquated system whose time has come. It's a very romantic notion to attract tourism, but not good for the citizens of San Antonio. It, it's already costing us because the money from the ATD has been taken out. We funded that and we did not want it used for this purpose. So with all that in consideration, I keep saying it's very, very underhanded to continue on with this project. I don't care which route you choose, you're still gonna, it's, it's gonna, the cost is gonna be way over what you all are estimating at this point. You know it. It's gonna be in the billions. And just simply to get federal monies from the Restoration Act just, just for mass transportation and you're, you're trying to get those matching funds, this is not the way to go about it. You should be upright with the citizens and put it before them. Again, either vote it up, vote it down. Stop doing this shenanigans. It's very underhanded and it's beneath all of you all sitting up there. Thank you very much. Masé Kualitunali.
Madam Chairwoman, there are no more citizens to be heard.
That takes us to item 10.
Is that the chair?
Yes.
I have previously made disclosure and filed an affidavit concerning a possible and perceived conflict of interest and therefore I have no choice but to recuse myself from any consideration of the locally preferred alignment and recuse myself in any discussion with the president.
I can't hear you.
Okay. Mr. Allison's microphone's not working. He has, he will be recusing himself from the vote.
Good morning, Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I also called on you to not be able to turn the...
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Priscilla and members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity this evening. Kyle and I would like to give you an update on this modern streetcar project. And at the end of this, we would make a recommendation for the locally preferred alternative. As many of you know, this is much a piece of a much larger transportation system that we've been looking at for the last five years or so. It started back in 2009 with the beginning of VIA's Long Range Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And in that Long Range Comprehensive Transportation Plan, VIA looked at the mobility needs for the community for the next 25 years. And some of the mobility needs are also being looked at this week by the Metropolitan Planning Organization, who with their modeling is projecting the growth of San Antonio to double by the day, by the 2040 date. So mobility needs and transportation needs and the looking and, and looking at the advancement of those is very important to this community as we move forward. As I mentioned, the modern streetcar is part of a much larger system. It started with the implementation of our Bus Rapid Transit Line last year. It continues with some of the planning we continue to do for future Bus Rapid Transit Lines, future light rail lines, future managed lanes and transit priority lanes associated with the I-10 and the 281 corridor. And also with our ability to move other things forward such as economic development in the community and as the community grows. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kyle to give the presentation this evening and we'll be happy to answer any questions at the end.
Thank you, Brian. Good evening, Board members. Appreciate the time that we've spent over the last year on this topic. I want to briefly recap for you where we've been over the last year when we initiated this alternatives analysis process. We had our first public meeting last November at Sunset Station, which many of you were able to join us. And as we've made advancements through this entire process, we have concluded each of those phases with a significant public meeting opportunity. We started with a universe of alternatives, numbering 17 different alternatives that we examined. We screened those. And for the last several months, we've been examining between six and eight alternatives at a very high level, digging into the weeds and being able to present to you tonight with the recommendation. Last week, we had another opportunity for public opportunity and this, for public input. And this is where we presented to the public our staff recommendation. We wanted to summarize this information to you as I know several of you were there and some were not. We did receive general support from the public for Alternative Six, which is our recommendation. The public did comment favorably that there, we did connect many of the destinations in the downtown area. They also felt, the public also commented that we would, this project had the potential to revitalize the city center and be able to grow this project forward to keep up with development in the future. We did also receive some comments that were favorable about the project relieving congestion, but also on balance, we had a number of comments that, that did call into question the cost of the project, which we, we addressed with the public during discussion there. In addition to that public meeting, we received a number of comments supporting the recommendation and supporting the streetcar project in general from a number of organizations, some of those you heard tonight. Some that I'll run through very quickly did not necessarily represent themselves tonight that have nonetheless gone on record. The San Antonio Conservation Society, the Institute of Texan Cultures, the Hemisfer Park, all of those have indicated support for the project, as has San Antonio Housing Authority and the La Vaca Neighborhood Association. We also heard from Centro Partnership this evening regarding their support for the streetcar project. We've had the opportunity to brief the San Antonio City Council during their B session detailed briefing opportunities and have received input from the council members. And importantly, we've also had the opportunity to brief the Fiesta Commission and they've provided us substantial input about how to coexist on Broadway in particular during Fiesta time. I wanted to just very briefly present to you our recommendation, which is Alternative Six with a couple of slight modifications. Alternative Six, as we know, pretty much connects the west side multimodal center on the west side along Martin Pecan, down Saint Mary's Navarro and along Cesar Chavez over to the Robert Thompson Transit Center. We also have the north-south right, north-south route that connects the generally the Pearl area along Broadway, again down through Saint Mary's Navarro and down to Cesar Chavez. We had an also, the difference between Alternative Five and Alternative Six was the addition of the, the extension along Cesar Chavez, west of Saint Mary's, up Santa Rosa and by El Mercado on West Commerce and Buena Vista. So that represents the stretch goal that we have to develop the system. There are two minor modifications that we have discussed with you in our working sessions. The first one is the extension of Saint Mary's south of Cesar Chavez down into the South Town area. You'll recall that that extension, that, that length was common to all of the other remaining alternatives and so we are just making this consistent with the ability to serve the South Town area. In addition, we have a couple of areas that have been suggested that are represented on this graphic in the green dotted lines that we, it's been suggested that we look at these during the environmental process and preliminary engineering to see if in fact there might be a benefit to operating two areas through this area. So rather than going up Santa Rosa to serve El Mercado, the suggestion has been to come up Flores to, to serve the El Mercado area along Commerce and Buena Vista. That is something that we'll examine. And along the Broadway alignment, it's been suggested that rather than having two-way streetcar movements in Broadway, that we have a, essentially a, a couplet that has movement along Broadway in one direction and along Alamo Street in the other direction. And this would be north of Third Street. The cost of that, this, wanted to summarize just a couple of key facts for you that we've shared with you. With the Saint Mary's extension down in the South Town, we are looking at a cost of Alternative Six of $280 million without contingency. We had a common basis for comparing all of the alternatives without contingency. This alternative was our longest route at 5.9 route miles. It does carry with it an annual operating budget requirement of $8.5 million. And it also would carry the most of all of the other riders of 1.4 million riders on an annual basis. So in quick, quick summary, as we evaluated all of the remaining alternatives at the end of our process, we identified that Alternative Six had the highest ridership. It did provide for the greatest opportunity for us to interface with the transformative development opportunities, particularly along Martin Pecan and Cesar Chavez. It also had a low to moderate environmental schedule risk factor, which was an important thing for us to consider as we move the project forward. Some of the other alternatives had greater risk associated with dealing with more cultural resources and greater proximity to the alignment. So this, this alignment actually, actually provided us with an opportunity to minimize those issues. It also, this alternative provides the best overall connectivity within all of the different activity centers in the downtown area. And it does accommodate future extensions to the various compass points to the east, to the west and north as well. Let me give you a little glimpse forward, if I might. And this is taking a look that assuming that we, that action is taken on a locally preferred alternative, there are several additional steps that require, are required for us to implement the project. The, the locally preferred alternative is a significant milestone in our process and it represents one of the four major steps that we have to accomplish in order to move this project forward. Once we have the locally preferred alternative, we move into the preliminary engineering and the environmental assessment phase, which will take us approximately a year to wrap up. That would allow us to identify impacts and deal with mitigation issues. Subsequent to receiving the environmental finding, we move into final design, which is the preparation of specific construction documents that would subsequently be bid and subject to construction. Once we've completed final design, we move into an approximate two-year construction timeframe that would put us into operation in late 2017. To provide you, again, just a couple of very quick glimpses of where we need to proceed in the future, the remainder of this year has some very key activities subsequent to the identification of the LPA. The first thing is to assess those green line options that we talked about along Alamo and then Flores in the south. We will evaluate those on the basis of the capital costs and compare those to the, the basic elements that we have in the LPA. We'll also evaluate, evaluate the O and M costs and ridership. One of the key things we want to make sure we understand are the risk to our schedule and the risk to, to budget as we look at those issues. So we'll be bringing those reviews and assessments back to you by the end of this calendar year. We also will start to develop a phasing and funding plan. And this is an important part now that if, once the LPA is set, we have a narrowed focus, we have an established vision, we need to make sure that we are able to build a project that is affordable. And you've heard the word phasing discussed by several of the commenters tonight and we've discussed that topic in prior working sessions with you. We will be identifying those phasing strategies and bringing that back to you. We will be identifying those phasing strategies and bringing that back to you, considering the funding opportunities associated with each of the strategies. Another important point that we've made a lot of progress on, and we're prepared to brief you next month, is on the status of the maintenance facility. And of course, you can't operate a system without having a maintenance facility, and so we've identified a number of sites, we've screened those sites, and we've evaluated them, we're prepared to bring that information to you for your consideration as we begin to move forward in the preliminary engineering efforts. Couple of quick things that, again, the end of the year is right on top of us, but next year, we've, we've already initiated a couple of efforts that require our focus next year. The big one there is the vehicle procurement activities. We've had a number of efforts that began last year, starting to get our arms around the vehicle manufacturers. We are currently in the process of developing the industrial design vision for, for the vehicle, and we are preparing a draft request for proposal document. That will be completed by early January in order that we can actually issue the RFP in March of 2014. Now that'll have a fairly lengthy evaluation process. We anticipate those proposals being due in September. But the vehicle aspects are a very important driver for our schedule. We want to make sure you're aware of that. Parallel to the vehicle effort, though, is the advancement of our NIPA and our preliminary engineering efforts. As I mentioned, that's something that we anticipate having wrapped up by 2014. This is a very important part of the project where we actually really narrow down and refine the costs of the project and the impacts associated with it, developing mitigation strategies, and basically getting the FTA, the Federal Transit Administration's approval of that environmental document. Those are a couple of steps for, looking forward, of course, subsequent to, to your action. And I'll, Brian, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kyle. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions, but staff does recommend the approval of the resolution as written in your packet tonight.
Do I have a motion? Dr. Gambetta?
Yes, I'd like to move that the VIA Board adopt the staff recommendation for the locally preferred alignment. The LPA commonly identified as Route Six, namely the Chavez-Broadway network, altered from the original number six to include an extension along south St. Mary's to Southtown. The motion allows for consideration of amendments to the basic LPA as designated in today's staff presentation, including staff evaluations of the feasibility of Flores Street and North Alamo, the green lines as Kyle had identified them. And let me make that as the motion, and I probably would have a second one after.
Second motion by Dr. Gambetta, second by Mr. Miller. Is there any discussion? Mr. Lee?
Yeah, I'd like to talk a little bit about, you discussed phasing. There's been a couple of thoughts. One has been north-south, one has been east-west. Is there any potential for a hybrid example? Here's why I call upon your expertise. For example, looking at other proposed routes, Alternative Five, which is, I think was accounted for anywhere in their capital cost from 201 to 228 million, is all encompassed in Six. Would that be something that could be considered? Or based upon the engineering, are we either looking at east-west or north-south?
Staff is in the very preliminary discussions about different alternatives, and there are hybrids, and they are not just east-west, and they are not just north-south. There are some alternatives that do utilize Martin Pecan over to the West Side Multimodal Center and Broadway elements. I think it's important, though, to reiterate something that was mentioned in the workshop, is that it's important that we hit the home run, but we also have logical termini, so that the process and the project needs to encompass and integrate with our existing bus service, with future bus service, and things like that. So as we move forward with the phasing options, that needs to be one of the foremost ideas in our phasing criteria, is how do we integrate with the existing bus service and the existing system?
And I've led to a follow-up, because I know one of the things that, obviously, we're going to be going after federal funding, that one of the things they look at is the ridership and the connectivity between bus and rail. And we have a great opportunity where we have two transit centers anchored on the east and the west. So I know that has to be considered.
Yes, exactly what staff is looking at at this time is how do we phase in such a way that makes us the most competitive in additional funding, but also makes the most sense for San Antonio in building a good project right out of the gate.
With Mr. Lee's permission, I would like, I would recommend that we deal with incrementally, because that's exactly the second point, the second third point, that I wanted to address in motions to direct staff to bring to us in the future, after you've done the analyses, a priority segments that we could spend, that we, we could cover with the existing $210 million that we have on local funding. So.
Sure. Absolutely.
Are there any other comments?
Call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. I think Dr. Gambetta says...
Madam Chairman, yes, I would like to move that we consider for possible adoption priority segments along the LPA in our streetcar system that cost approximately the amount of $210 million in already secured and committed funds, that we direct to have staff to undertake immediately a process for identification and recommendation of a priority segment to the Board for possible adoption and inclusion into our planning process.
So you're basically outlining the priority process?
Yeah, that they would come back to us with a series of the types of priority segments that Mr. Lee, trustee Lee, had suggested, and so that we could review those and then make a decision to see how we could start and how we could bridge towards.
And it could offer up kind of to fold it in, if you might be able to wordsmith better than I, but also to discuss, and I'm sure, the operational maintenance cost with, with each alternative, because as Will stated, that's one...
I think that was stated.
It's such a third? Oh, we've been working too hard to get...
The maintenance facility and for the examination on the maintenance and operation.
Second? Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
May I ask a question, please?
Sorry.
I'm trying to understand what the thrust of that is, and so is this part of the process that you envision us, I guess, proceeding along, trying to get to a refinement process and do haste and trying to get you to respond to the requests that's been made?
Yes, that is correct. I think it is important for us to realize that the system may have to be phased, and we do have to look at prioritization of some portion of the alignment, and that's what staff has been directed to.
And how soon do you think it would be bringing back recommendations along those lines?
We think we would need 30 to 60 days, so I'm guessing that the next, either next board meeting or the November board meeting.
And that's going to not slow down the process that we have been trying to adhere to, to this point, right?
That is correct, but tonight's adoption of the LPA, staff is going to move full ahead with the whole system with engineering and environmental plans.
I guess the one thing that I want to say about that is that, obviously, the, how we implement this project is as important as what we just approved tonight, and I think there needs to be great sensitivity given to that as much as there was given frankly to, to supporting this project, because I think there are many considerations that go into making the right choices here. And we've heard some of those expressed tonight, and I think those are good, but there are others as well, and so I want to make sure that we have an all-inclusive process that respects the various interests that come to bear on this project.
I couldn't agree more with that comment, and also I would like to encourage you to come back to us in a month with the outlines of the different possibilities. At this point, we have to adopt a LPA, which we have now done, in order to be considered and to seek federal funding and other public and private funding, some of which we've already heard, be willing to be contributed even tonight. And therefore, I'd like to see us could move as expeditiously as possible, and I appreciate the efforts up till now. I would just like to compliment the staff and the consulting team for bringing us this far, for the design of a significant and, and I think impressive network for the streetcar that is an open possibility for connectivity and for development. I think it will enhance significantly our mobility and transportation interconnectivity, not simply downtown, as we heard tonight pursuant to what Mr. Conick said, but citywide, countywide, and regionally. Secondly, will increase public transportation ridership downtown, which in turn will decrease congestion of cars and buses, with positive secondary effects and decreasing pollution. Third, stimulate economic development in our downtown with transit-oriented and transit-adjacent commercial retail, housing, and mixed-use development, all with positive impact on infill construction, job creation, and business development. Fourth, enhance quality urbanization and downtown livability with a multitude of business, recruiting, environmental, energy, and health benefits. Five, generate a continuing handsome return on investment, a continuing return on investment for the people, taxpayers, tax bases, businesses, and governmental entities, as an example, SA ISD's property tax base of San Antonio for decades. Maximize the goals above. I think that alignment number six is an ideal network, and this route also maximizes the potential to accomplish those goals, preserve while preserving the natural and cultural landscape and integrity of our city. So I'd just like to compliment you for accomplishing those things in design, and now we have a formidable task in implementation of, and execution of that line, and, and seeking successfully the funding that would allow us to do a world-class network, a streetcar, a, 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 a modern, modern streetcar network for a world-class city.
All right. Did you want to say anything else before we vote?
Yes, I do. I also want to echo what Dr. Gambetta said. After looking at all the routes, I do want to applaud staff. Y'all did yeoman's work on this, continuously listened to the Board, y'all went out to the community, listened to the community, brought back information. Cannot thank y'all enough. After the review of these routes, it became abundantly clear that Route Six, our LPA, it moves the maximum amount of citizens in San Antonio. It provides access to business centers, it provides access to housing, it provides access to cultural sites, access to higher education, access to medical facilities, increased quality of life with restaurants, stores, enhanced transit-oriented development, something up to 26 to 29 acres available. It's anchored on the east and west by transit centers. It's anchored on the north and south by final destination sites. And finally, it'll move tourists also. And the, the one thing we haven't stated, I've stated publicly, I want their dollars. I want them moving around downtown, I want them moving to the north and south, I want them spending their dollars and leaving them here. So I think Route Six accomplishes all this. And I cannot stress enough that at this point in time, the importance of investing in our urban core, that a strong central city provides for a strong overall city. Thank y'all so much.
Just like to say also, thank you to your team, Kyle. I think the staff did outstanding job. I think the partnership with the consultants gave us a thorough, thorough process, and I think it will suit us well as we go into the next phase. So do I have, I need a vote on, all in favor for the motion for the phasing?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. You have a project.
Now the real work starts.
That's right.
Yes.
Okay, that moves us along to item number six. We're going to back up and pick up the items before item 10. Real Estate and Development Consultant, Mr. Buchanan.
Good evening, and thank you. I'd like to give a quick briefing on a procurement we are asking for approval this evening. We would like to procure the services of a real estate and development consultant services to help us implement some of the long-range transit-oriented development and to maybe leverage some of VIA's current assets in maybe a different way in and around downtown. This is also known, for those of you that have been around a little while, the master developer contract, so they are one and the same. So this evening, staff is asking for a request for approval for a three-year consultant contract, not to exceed $1 million in total, for VIA for real estate and development services. So there are many things that we are going to ask this team to work with staff and work with the Board on, and that is a preliminary list here, but I think these are some of the things that we've heard over the years. So make sure we do an evaluation of the current VIA holdings. VIA owns a lot of property, and we have a lot of property that may have some higher and better uses, but we need to know the market analysis and have some professional help with us with that. So we're going to ask the consultant with an initial task order to look at our existing VIA assets. As many of you also know, with the implementation of BRT and now with the implementation of streetcar and with the implementation of urban-type living, there's an analysis that needs to be done on joint development TOD opportunities. This also plays well into our applications to the federal government for any additional funding. So this is very important that we begin to look at these types of developments within this community and also make sure that we're working with the city, who does ultimately set policies and procedures associated with that, but to make sure that we are singing the same sheet of music, so as we do apply for funding, we have the best competitive environment we could possibly have. And then obviously, many things need to be done, and therefore, we need to determine funding mechanisms to implement these things. So as we move forward, we'll be looking at maybe grants that we are not traditionally procured or gone after, such as HUD grants or teaming with other individuals as we move forward in that process. And then they will also ask as the owner's representative, and I apologize, I did not introduce my, my cohort here, Mr. Knudsen is with, with the firm that we are, we are looking at procuring tonight, and he's the principal with Economic and Planning Systems, and I'll have him speak in a few minutes about his firm. But also the owner's representation of procurement materials and development, evaluation of proposals and agreements. As many of you know, we do have some current proposals for, for development in the VIA, VIA offices, to help us with negotiations and closings, establishing rent levels on some of the assets we currently own, but also assets that we are currently in the process of building, such as West Side Multimodal Center Phase Two and Phase One. And then board and staff training as we move forward in this process. I think it's very important that we not only educate and utilize a consultant to work through these things, but educate staff as we move forward. DBE and SBE goals will be set per task order. We don't know exactly what the task orders are right now, but we have a good idea, but we will set them based on each individual task order. This was a regular procurement we went through. It did have some selection criteria. We received three proposals. The team qualifications were 10 points, staff experience was 15, the capacity and the staffing level required was also 15 points, and then we asked them for a project approach and written presentation of how they would implement our, our program, but also how they have successfully worked with other clients across the nation to implement that. That was a total of 100 points associated with that. As part of that program, we brought all three teams in for an interview that included staff, along with a board representative and CEO, Mr. Arnt, associated with that. And amongst the team and the advisory panel, there was a unanimous recommendation to contract with Economic Planning Systems team. And on that team, this evening, if they're in the, if they're in the audience, is Ms. Vickery Johnson with Vickery and Associates. They are a local engineering firm that have teamed up with this team. And also Michael Wise, the president of Forum Realty, and they are also a local firm associated with, with this team. So with that, this evening, I would like to approve a recommendation to have the CEO enter into contract with Economic and Planning Systems.
So move.
Question?
Motion second? For second?
Second.
Question?
Yes, sir.
How did you come up with a million-dollar figure over a three-year period of time?
Yeah, that is a estimate based on what we see there today. I cannot tell you that it was an exact science. It is a guess at this time, pretty much, as we move forward. But if we do need more money, we will have to come to the Board and ask for more money. But if we need less money, we will not spend a million dollars.
Is there any particular reason why you chose a million dollars before you come back to us and ask us for more money?
We do anticipate that the services that we do believe are in our hands today would reach somewhere around that million-dollar figure over three years. This is a three-year number, so it's about $333,000 a year.
The evaluation committee was made up of how many board members?
There was one board member on the, on the selection...
Any reason why we didn't have two, as we normally do on most evaluations?
I would ask Mr. Arnt that question.
The chairman had originally appointed two board members, and he was the second board member and was not able to make the entire interview period. And when you're in the advisory capacity, you need to attend all interviews equally. So he asked me to sit in on that day.
Thank you, Ms. Arnt. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, could we start back again? A motion?
Can I just follow up? Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mary. Who was the other board member who sat on that committee?
Mr. Pitch.
Okay.
And Mr. Pitch was among the group, among the unanimous group in the selection.
And we had someone who could not make it?
Mr. Munoz could not make it. He had originally put himself on the committee.
Thank you, Ms. Arnt.
Originally, this was stated for consent and asked what could be pulled for several reasons. One, I thought it'd be concerning. Two, after beating up Brian so much, I figured he'd at least want to lay this out. So thank you, Brian.
Okay, motion?
Aye, moved. So moved.
Second? Need a second? Thank you, Mr. Martin, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
Okay, we have one abstention and five ayes. Is that right? Did I get that right? No. Our two people came back.
Yeah, they came back.
Okay, Deborah, make note. Yep. Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, let's move on to items seven, which South Central Texas Regional Certification Agency Presentation. Ms. Mendoza.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. This evening, we have visitors. Actually, they are our certifying agency partner. Representing the South Central Texas Regional Certification Agency is the Vice Chair, Susan Rodriguez, who I'll ask to come up, and also the Executive Director, Ross Mitchell. Ms. Rodriguez will introduce other members of the RCA board who are here. As you know, this is a partnership that VIA has with the certification agency. RCA is kind of moving to do a presentation to all their major partners, and I know that several of the board members had expressed an interest in the RCA coming and being able to present what they do on our behalf. This is our certifying partner, so if I could ask Ms. Rodriguez and Executive Director Mitchell to come up.
Good evening, Ma- Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Susan Rodriguez. I am the Minority and Women Business Enterprise Coordinator at the Edwards-Aucafer Authority. And it is my pleasure to give you an overview of the South Central Texas Regional Certification Agency. I currently serve as Vice Chair for this year. And as De'Annie Mendoza mentioned, I have Mr. Ross Mitchell here, the Executive Director. We also have two other board members here, Ms. Mariso Robles with the San Antonio Water Systems, and we have Mr. Charles Johnson with Alamo Colleges. I will brief you, give you a little bit of background of the SCTRCA. We were created in 1998. We are a 501(c)(3) corporation. The reason we were created was to have a joint certification for disadvantaged business, small, minority, and women-owned business enterprises for the various programs with interlocal agencies. The SCTRCA has deep roots with VIA. VIA is one of the founding members of the SCTRCA, as well as San Antonio Water System, the San Antonio Housing Authority, City of San Antonio, and CPS. And I would like to note that of the five founding members, we still have four original members on our board. Currently, we have an operating budget of $238,458. That is our budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014, and this budget starts on October 1st. We do have three full-time employees with a combined tenure of 30 years' experience, and I would also like to point out that Mr. Mitchell here himself has 19 years in DBE experience, which is very beneficial to VIA and your DBE program. Our current interlocal members are Alamo Colleges, Brooks Development Authority, City of San Antonio, Edwards-Aucafer Authority, Port San Antonio, San Antonio Housing Authority, San Antonio Independent School District, San Antonio River Authority, San Antonio Water System, University Health System, and of course, VIA Metropolitan. Some of the member benefits that we provide are cost savings for certification to our governmental entities in that we, since we have hired personnel, we incur the cost of benefits that may have to be paid out if you had these additional employees at your agencies. We also, the employees have training, and we save you in retirement. All of the SCTRCA employees undergo mandatory DBE training, and they are also cross-trained in the various certifications that we offer at our agencies. We are also a reliable third-party review of certification applications. They are reviewed by trained, certified professionals. And this is a cost savings to VIA because it decreases your liability for your DBE program. We do offer expedited certifications, so if a vendor is requiring a certification, they would like to bid on a project to one of our board members, we can fill out an expedited form to help them along with their certification in order to bid on a project. And we do offer a one-stop certification to our vendors for the small, minority, women, disadvantaged business program, as well as for hub. And Mr. Mitchell, we'll talk to you about the certification.
Good evening, Madam Chair, personally. What I'm going to talk about is the TUCP program that we have. We have the memorandum of agreement with the other TUCP certified entities where we have our standard operating procedures that all of us UCPs use the same guidelines. We preside with the TUCP reciprocal certification in our federal program. It allows our members here in San Antonio, the vendors, to get reciprocal certification in the other TUCP certified areas except for the City of Houston. The SCTRCA was the only TUCP certified partner that was not, had a finding during the 2009 FTA UCP review. And the SCTRCA participates quarterly in TUCP meetings where we all get together to talk over issues and concerns with our certification programs. Just a quick brief on the statistics. On our DB site visits, every DB that we certify to send state, we have to go out and visit them at their offices. So the year 2010, we went out and did 61 DB site visits. 2011 was 50, and 2012 was 73. As for its office visits, where we have vendors come into the office where they have one-on-one councils, or we go with a certification package. In 2010, it was 1,133. 2011 was 1,085, and 2012 was 910. Certification statistics, for the year of 2010, we had approximately, it was 243, I think that was the renewals. We had 243 DB renewals. 2011, it was 251, and in 2012, it was 205 DB renewal applications that we processed. And as for its new certifications, 2010, it was 86. 2011, it was 72, and in 2012, it was 113. With our SBE program, with the statistics on that one, and the SBE renewals, it was approximately, I didn't get those figures. It was about 1,050 on the SBE renewals in 2010. In 2011, it was 1,400, and in 2012, it was approximately 1,100 also. With the new certification, the SBE, in 2010, it was 658. 2011, it was 380, and in 2012, it was 441.
Madam Chair, we would like to introduce Mr. Efrain Perez. He is a DBE prime awardee with the IDQ general concrete work that was awarded through VIA, and he is with San Antonio Concepts Construction to discuss a success story that we've had with certification and with VIA.
Here's my partner, Mark Lopez, and we're very excited about working with VIA as a DBE. We got the general concrete work, IDQ, and I don't know if you have any questions or something about-
Is there any member of the board that would like to ask any questions or comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a very brief overview. The RCA is kind of trying to reconnect with all of its partners. It has not done a presentation in many years to any of the partners, and so this is a dry run for them. I apologize for, in advance, for Alejandra Lopez, who is Alex Lopez with the City of San Antonio, who is in the area of the Cities Economic Development Program and certainly deals with all of these issues. She is the chair, but is on extended travel and could not be here this evening. I know that Aurora Perkins from her office is in the, in the audience, and so I'd like to recognize her. The important part, I think, of what we wanted to bring today was to assure you that the RCA continues to function very strongly. It continues to be our certifying agent. As you know, we have made a recommendation within the budget to continue our relationship with them. We believe it has been a very good relationship for many, many years. It continues to help us, and in the story I bring to you in a few moments, I think you will see some of the benefits of that particular relationship. If there are any questions for Susan, I'll let her come back to the speaker. I know we're pressed for time, and we have many, many issues before you tonight, so I don't want to press this further, but we did want to be sure that the RCA had an opportunity to address you.
Mr. Mitchell and Ms. Susan, your budget for 2013, 2014 is $238,458. How much was your budget in 2012, 2013?
2012 and 2014, it started out at-
2012, 2013, last year.
Started out at 258,000, and then due to certain costs that we didn't utilize anymore, it was lower to pretty much the same, 238,000, 239,000.
I'm concerned that when I got an email that said that you as a regulatory agency and you were providing us with DBE certifications, when they said you guys are having a fundraiser at a, one of the local restaurants, I was kind of concerned about what the financial health is of the SCTRCA.
I'll be happy to address that.
Ms. Susan, you want to discuss that?
Yes, sir. Director Miller, the SCTRCA marketing committee decided to have a fundraiser to try to replenish some of our funds that had been depleted. And what we decided to do is in the future, we want to have like a mixer fundraiser to have vendors come out and meet with us to know about the agency to get them certified. It was something that we tried. We don't really know how successful it was. We think it was a little bit successful, but we think we're going to just revamp it a little bit and have member entities out there to meet prospective small, minority, or woman-owned and DBE businesses.
How do you plan on addressing your decrease in your budget, your loss of revenue?
Yes, we, what we do is we have an aggressive marketing campaign right now. We updated our marketing brochures, and we are, our bread and butter is member entities. And so we have a list of member entities that we are targeting, and we're going to call them. We want to have an open house to have them come and meet the RCA, meet the employees, meet other board members to see what we're about, to get them to join our agency.
Can you tell me, Ms. Susan, if VIA can get our certification for DBE, because that's our main focus for federal dollars from the Texas Unified Certification Program, why should we continue to pay to get it certified?
Well, some of the member benefits I mentioned earlier, Mr. Miller, and we do decrease VIA's liability regarding the DBE certification program. We-
What does that mean? You decreased that liability?
Okay, in other words, we have the separation of functions. If we're doing the certifications for VIA, doing appeal decisions or denials, and if we have to go to litigation, it comes to the agency and it's not back on VIA. If we perform our certifications incorrectly, and if VIA was doing a certification, they can withhold your federal funds. But with the agency being your certifying entity, it's not that crutch to be over VIA. So the liability is with the agency.
But the loss of federal dollars still will fall back upon VIA if the people that you're certifying are losing credibility?
Well, it's not the certain people that we are certifying that will lose credibility, it's the agency that will lose credibility.
And with the agency losing credibility, we'll lose qualified DBEs and we'll lose federal funds.
And the agency has been in the forefront of all the certified TUCP partners. So we have not had that issue. We have not had any of our denials that had appeals to go up to USDOT to come back to the agency.
My other, my only other concern, Madam Chair, if you would indulge me, is that I'm concerned about why there is passive discrimination going on with the database. And what do I mean by passive discrimination? That means that if we have large construction firms, for an example, who are looking into your database, they have to pay for access. Can you explain that to me, Mr. Mitchell, why we've gone from, because see, I'm one of the founders of the SCTRCA, so I want to know why we went from free to begin to charge for that data access?
Well, the, I mean, your federal program, that information is available where it should be on the TUCP directory. So it's not discriminatory. Anyone that wants the database, they can go to the TUCP directory, download all the DB firms that are there, and if they don't, because even if they went to our database, those DBs has to be on the TUCP before they're eligible for the federal contracts. So if they went to our database and they couldn't find a DB that which is relatively accessible to them, they just can't export it. They can print it in a PDF format, but they need to go to the TUCP where the information is available to them.
And Ms. Susan, final question for you is that it appears you guys are going to have a $40,000 shortfall this year. What are you going to do?
So?
Looking at the budget, you're coming up $40,000 short.
We, Director Miller, we recently passed our budget for 2013, 2014, and we didn't have-
And that's because you decreased it from the last three years' average? Is that right? It gets lower?
We lost the staffing. So that salary that was going toward that staff member is what made the difference come up.
So you won't be filling that position?
We will not be in a deficit.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, I have a question, De'Annie. Eddie, you might be able to help out?
Thank you.
Oh, no, I respect you, but I do want to get the opinions of our staff.
Yes, sir.
After listening, there are some concerns. What is- What is y'all's confidence in the RCA?
I have absolute confidence in the work. I do sit on the executive committee along with Susan. Eddie is my alternate to any of those meetings. He, all staff, all VIA staff attends all the board meetings, so we are consistently involved with any concerns that come up. We've been intricately involved in budget. We monitor very closely. We're very fortunate also to have a great relationship with DOT, FTA. So we have always, when there is any concern, we make sure that there is no concern that goes beyond anything that we cannot handle. So all our questions are answered, so we have absolute concern because, I mean, absolute confidence, because there's no concerns that we know are out there to make us not believe that everything that we're doing right now is adequate.
With our aggressive outreach to DBs, has the RCA been of benefit?
Absolutely.
Yes, it has.
Particularly when we expedite, there are many, many of our procurements that go very quickly, as you know, so they have been very helpful. They are an active participant with all the agencies. In IDEA, the conference coming up on October 16th, they will be certifying, they will be at the table, they are always at the table. They are a partner, and we consider them a partner of the agency.
I appreciate it.
I appreciate you saying that our board has had representation. Have both of you been at the last three or four meetings of the SCTRCA?
Yes, I've been to the last meeting attended. The part that was not it.
I have not been. I have missed three. I can tell you that, and I have always had either a conflict, as you know, right now, holding down a couple of different positions. My timeframes have been real tight, but Alex and I meet consistently for breakfast at 7:30 in the morning, when I can meet with her before my meeting starts during the day, and so I'm constantly kept apprised of everything that's occurring.
Do you think it would be important, Dr. Mendoza, that our primes have free access to this database of DBEs, as opposed to going to the Texas Unified Certification Agency for that information?
Well, I think that they do have access to everything.
Free access, they have to pay if they go through this web, your website.
Mr. Miller, sir, what we do is, we, as advocates, we provide that information to submitting primes. When we have respondents come to our pre-bids, I'm always at the pre-bids to always advocate and outreach and indicate to them to contact me for the specific next codes that they're seeking to support that contract. And I willingly provide that listing to all our CA's so they can distribute it to all the pre-bid attendees and non-attendees.
But it is true, is it not, Eddie, that they cannot access that information on their own?
No, they can access it and drop, no, they can download it in the PDF format, which is free, and then copy and paste it. The TUCP, Texas Dot, is the overseeing member, is the one authorized to say, "These are truly certified DBs," because they have the final say-so on the certification provided by our local members, be it North Central Texas, Corpus Christi, RTA, Austin, City of Houston, and South Central Texas. And that's why, by going to the Texas Dot, which is free, and they can export in Excel, they can verify that they're valid certified DBEs.
And again, I asked the question, we could get certification from another agency free of charge, as opposed to us being financially supportive of this one, thus this RCA.
How the UCP's broken down, sir, is basically, it's regional. South Central Texas provides a nine-county area for the certification, that's part of the relationship. That would really be detrimental, because it would really knock down our numbers. I determined my annual DBE goal based on local, willing, enabled DBE certified in this region to create my annual goal. That would impact me substantially.
Maybe let me ask you a question a different way. Is it possible for our DBs to get certification somewhere else?
If they're approved by a UCP member?
And is it possible for VIA to have access to that without having a subscription to the RCA? Can we get our people certified elsewhere in Texas free? That's a yes or no question.
I guess they could go to North Central and be certified in North Central.
No, 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 I'm not talking about another nonprofit.
Are you preferring a region here?
I'm talking about, this region is represented by the Texas Unified Certification Agency, right?
This region is represented by South Central Texas, which falls under Texas Unification Certification Program.
Okay. Are there any other certification agencies out there that could do this without us having a subscription?
Not in our region, sir.
Not in our region. And we would have, a private business, if I were a small business, I could go certify at North Central. They would probably charge me to do exactly the same thing that we do here would be done there. You would still have reciprocity, you know, we could call North Central and say, "Are they certified?" And they would tell us, "Yes, they are." But there's no one in the region that can certify for our availability listing. Now, go ahead.
Currently authorization's only given to South Central Texas, this region, which is nine counties. To replace this region, you would have to find another outside source in this region to provide that service, otherwise...
Texas doesn't provide that service?
Texas does, but Texas Dot provides it for their specific regions that are not supported through North Central, Houston, Austin, CTRTA. But what I'm indicating to you is that to go to Texas Dot, which means you have to go to Austin, which would be an inconvenience and a barrier to the DBEs. They'd have to do site visits and have Texas Dot send office members down here to do the site visits. Hence, that's why the relationship was created originally with UCP and RCA as a nonprofit, to provide that service as a one-stop for all the entities involved.
Excuse me, Mr. Miller, it seems like some of us are sitting here that this is getting into some detail, that perhaps we should have a staff briefing at the committee structure and then have a presentation as to resolve some of these questions, because I'm totally caught in the dark on this.
Right, and we have had a, and we have had a meeting privately with VIA staff as well as some people from there, and we wanted to bring it here, but you're right, we probably need to have a little bit more in-depth discussion, because I want to see the RCA survive, but I also want it to be viable to our community.
Does anybody object if we defer this back to a committee structure?
I think that's a wonderful idea.
Thank you for being here this evening, and we're sorry if there's any inconvenience, and we will get back to you in terms of the structure of committees.
And we'll be glad to do that.
Can we move on then to item number, since you're there, item number eight, the next item, diversity initiatives, initiatives update.
Okay, this is good news, and I'm going to go quickly, because I know we're on a crunch, and I'll try to not get crazy. We wanted to do an update on diversity utilization initiatives. We're almost at an end of a fiscal year, and so we have some very good news for you. I wanted to kind of give you an update on where we are on FTA compliance, very quickly. Goal achievement, where we think we're going to be by the end of the year. Very important to you, something you authorized for me about a year and a half ago when I first came to VIA, which was the big software called B2G Now, and where we are on that, and I'm very excited to give you some great news on that. Prime and subcontractor information, because I know many of you always want us to dissegregate the data and let you know what we're doing by ethnic group and gender and different areas, so we will have that. This, I won't go through that, just to tell you, we have submitted every report needed and are in very, very good shape. We're pending just two. In October, the 10th of October, we will submit our ERA, fourth quarterly report, and as you know, the ERA funds needed to be spent by a particular deadline. And then, at the end of the year, we will do our biannual DBE uniform report on the second six months of this year on what we have accomplished with regard to goal. I wanted to share this with you, because this is something that was given to us. Again, we have a great relationship with Federal Transit Administration, in particular the Office of Civil Rights. Texas is doing extraordinarily well. We have high DBE participation rates in comparison to some other major states, and we were able to bring that information to you. The next two slides, I just got clearance, so they weren't in your packet, to allow me to present them to you while I was in Washington. I can't tell you who we're compared to, but I will tell you the data's great. The proportion of funds to DBs in the first half fiscal year 2013, San Antonio's leading the pack. So I think that's great news. Percent of dollars awarded to DBs, we are leading the pack, almost 45% of the funding. I'll let Eddie talk to you about this. This is the Uniform Report of DB Awards and Commitments and where we are kind of on our goal. It's our first six months that we submitted on June 1. Very quickly for him to just hit the highlights.
Very quickly, the uniform report plays the integral part. There's two uniform reports that we submit for June 1 and December 1. These are what builds into the annual goal that we submitted for 2012, which was 24%. Real quickly, for commitments and awards, we issued out $10.8 million in awards, and we had subcontracting of 5.4 that was reported to the FTA. That demonstrated that we had $4.8 million in DB participation for prime contractors and for subcontractors. That's both line eight and nine. To get to the straight point of the matter is, we had 45% of commitments and awards for DB participation. That's what put us in the lead in the state of Texas. We break it down by ethnicity and gender. We had two DB firms that would issue $3.5 million. Hispanic Americans, $833,000. There was none for Native American at this time. Subcontinental Asian American, 208. Asian PAC American, none. And non-minority women, $315,000, which gave us a total participation of 36 DBE firms, which are prime DBs and subs, or 4.8, which was reported to Department of Transportation and FTA. They want to know what our secret is, and basically is the policy created.
On goal achievement, as Eddie's mentioning to you, we just reported on June 1, 45%. We're estimated to report December 1 between 25 and 30%, so we think we will end the year, and we may shoot this, from 30 to 35% in DB participation. I wanted to kind of let you know where we were on B2G, so I can show you some figures of where that is. One of the big challenges I've had for a year and a half has been the transfer of our procurement data. I would be very remiss if I did not tell you how grateful staff is, both to Terry Dudley, who manages procurement, and a young woman who has become the guru on B2G Now software. Her name is Ashley Ramirez, and if she's in the audience, I want her to stand. With Terry allowing her to be targeted on this project, and with a couple of attempts, she has pretty much, single-handedly, transferred three years of DBE data and all contractual data. All our procurement will now shift from something called public purchase to B2G Now. We're in the process of finalizing our vendor registration, and we're opening the portal. We've already met with Public Affairs on the website and what we need to do there to link to this, and how the business questionnaire would be integrated. And we will showcase this at IDEA on October the 16th. We'll be registering more folks, but we are shifting that. So how is that gonna help us? It's gonna help us, my being able to do this first report that I just was able to push a button and get for you. And this is total subcontractor awards and where they lie. We really shot the tops off some of this in the African-American community, especially we've been very successful.
How did that happen?
We have had two, three major contracts, two to black males, African-American males, and one to a young SBE firm, starting out, who is a black male.
What kind of contract, Dr. Mendoza?
Emfo Corporation is our paratransit vendor, Alan Reed, and Tim Porter with App addiction, who has done a lot of work on our apps, the award-winning apps. Do we need more firms to represent these dollars? Absolutely, and we're moving in that direction. That's what the marketplace that we're bringing to you on October 16th will be. I want to look at it a different way. So of the, if I could, you know, tell you, of the $264,000 that we awarded in what we have in our contractual base, we have awarded $20 million of that in these particular categories by ethnicity and gender. So you have Asian firms, a female picking up $2,006,000, males picking up close to $500,000. In the African-American sector, you have these contracts for over $10 million, almost $10,500,000, and a small contractual firm on DB. Caucasian, we do have $2,006,000, which almost matches what you have in Asian. You have Hispanics, very balanced, $2 million for females, $2 million for males. And what we call unknown is when they do not self-certify themselves, and they end up on our database. But that is a terminology you will begin to see when you use the B2G Now, because I hope to be able to give you all a password, so you can go in and look at the database when you want to see what we're doing. Types of contracts, I want you to know where they were, obviously in goods and services or professional services, construction and architecture and engineering. Outreach initiatives, and this is where we're going, is the Second Annual IDEA Conference on October the 16th. We have MOUs that we've executed. We are continuing for a second-year pilot with Hispanic contractors. We just executed an MOU with the NAACP San Antonio branch. We have an event with them coming up, I believe it's October 8th. Renewal of a partnership with the Alamo City Black Chamber of Commerce. We have just sponsored a meeting for the Greater San Antonio Advisory Board. That's part of the Texas Diversity Council. We're continuing to attend Fair Contracting Coalition meetings and working with Mr. TC Calvert and others, certainly all of the partners that were here this evening. We are sponsors of the Business Opportunity Academy, which was very successful, and we will be graduating the first class during the IDEA conference. And then, we're networking very strongly with the Comptos San Antonio Chapter to help them get, continue their reactivation and moving stronger in the national arena. And that's my presentation for you this evening. I hope it's good news. You've had good news all evening, I hope. So thank you very much. I can answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
It is good news, Dr. Mendoza, but I am still concerned about why the Hispanic numbers are not higher in this city.
Well, I think we're gonna have to continue to bring people to the table. We're gonna have to continue to certify them. It is my message consistently, that in order for you to win and be counted, I always make an analogy that I can't invite you to the party if I don't even know who you are. So I need, I need for people to be certified, enter into the vendor database, for us to outreach to them, bring them in. That's what we're doing with the NAACP branch, is really bringing those businesses who have not done business, and we're gonna walk them through, "How do you do business with us?" And that, whether it's the DB certification process or just vendor registration so that they can get the information out of B2G. We're now able to e-blast to anyone who's registered with us, so that has reached a great many people. So that's another module that we have access to that allows instant reach into that business sector that's already doing business with us or wants to.
I'd like to acknowledge that I'm impressed by the progress that we've seen. I also share trustee Miller's concerns about Hispanic contractors and look forward to those numbers increasing also. And I'm intrigued, finally, and I look forward to the password, so that we can monitor this on an ongoing basis, and thank you very much for that. Thank Ms. Ramirez for doing the transference and opening that portal. I'm intrigued, though, by the agency comparison to undisclosed Texas properties. It's Texas properties.
I can tell you kind of who they are, but I can't tell you which bar belongs to who.
Well, would they be comparable agencies?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely. We're compared to Houston, we're compared to DART, we're compared to Texas, we're compared to that type of leader agency in Texas.
It's part of Homeland Security. But I expect that...
No, Homeland Security. Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, let's move on. We still need to get our budget done. So thank you very much. Thank you for being here this evening, and thank you for a great job. Mr. Lang, the stage is yours, debt financing.
Do Agenda Item 11?
We're on, we're on item nine.
Debt financing is asterisk for legal session?
We don't have to go into executive session for that briefing, so we're gonna do it in public session.
Good evening. My name is Troy Madras. I work for First Southwest Company, and I'm joined here with Paul Jack with Estrada and Hozza. We're the co-financial advisors for VIA Transit. And so, this evening, we're gonna give a brief presentation about the bond financing that's gonna take place in a few weeks, and specifically talk about what's gonna happen between now and when the... to happen between now and when the bonds are priced and when the bonds are sold. So as Mr. Arndt had mentioned, S&amp;P had given the transit agency a AAA rating on one series of bonds on the $33 million ATD sales tax bond issue. They're due to provide the rating on the other fare box revenue issue of about $40 million in the next few days, and so we will share that with staff and board when it becomes available. Once we receive those ratings, at the same time, under consent, the board approved the underwriting syndicate for both deals, and so the information related to that's in your packet. Those members of the underwriting team are going to have to go through a process called due diligence, in which their counsel will meet with staff, financial advisors, bond counsel, to go over some questions that they have just related to the history of the organization, its financial condition, other material issues that would be relevant when they speak to investors who have similar questions related to the credit. We anticipate that'll happen at the end of this week. Once we finalize all our documents, and that will incorporate the rating that we get for the fare box bonds, we'll release the POS next week. So the POS stands for the Preliminary Official Statement. That is the official offering document that goes out to investors. It provides all the basic information related to each deal, and it's preliminary because it hasn't been filled in with all the pricing information that'll take place in a few weeks. That'll be released next week, and at that point, we'll be in the pre-marketing period. So that means that over the course of two weeks, investors, you know, people who buy the bonds will be asking questions to the underwriters, and so most of the time, they'll be able to field those questions, but often, Mr. Lange, ourselves, other members of the financing team will be asked different questions related to those bonds. During that time, we will record a, what's known as a net roadshow. So it will be an investor presentation on both series of bonds, and onboard, we'll have the CFO and the CEO give some part of the presentation, and that'll be available to investors during that time period. So that period takes about two weeks. On October 15th, there'll be a public hearing. That hearing is required as a result of state law that will allow the public to ask questions related to the bond financing. During that time, that middle-of-the-week, members of the financing team, so that might include senior staff, some board members, will travel to New York to go to the pricing. And so what the pricing consists of is the actual day in which the investors make their orders, and the underwriters receive those orders. They'll come back to the financing team and say that we've got interest rates, coupons, yields in this order, and then they will ask the financing team to approve or give a verbal award to those pricings. And so because we've got two deals and two underwriters, we'll have to do that twice. So typically, they'll have a pricing that takes place in the morning. Once that's complete, that takes probably all in around two or three hours. We'll travel to the next underwriter and do the next deal. So all in all, that'll take a good part of the day. At that point, we'll have more or less the interest rates set, but then it'll have to be approved at an official board meeting the next day. So on Thursday the 16th, I'm sorry, Thursday the 17th, the team will return to San Antonio, and at 5:30, they will provide written award for the bonds. All the documents will be signed, and then subsequently, a few weeks later, the bonds will be delivered, and the money will be received by Via Transit. During that time period, a transcript of the proceedings will be sent to the Attorney General's office, who has a responsibility to approve those bonds. They'll give that approval, and then we'll be able to close the bonds during that time.
For the record, this is Paul Jack with Estrada and the Hozza. Just to clarify, so on Thursday the 17th, at that board meeting, you will take action to approve and have an opportunity to approve the bonds at that point in time, take official action. And then just as a side note, any of the material that we provide to investors, the internet net roadshow that we mentioned, or the Preliminary Official Statement, if any board member wants access to that, once it's made public, we can be happy to make that available as well.
And I think there's a strong push among the underwriters to try to find, you know, some retail interest, so, you know, people are interested in buying the debt, as well as local investors that have a presence in the municipal finance industry. So it's definitely helpful to have Texas buyers, so, and people, I think, will be interested in the debt because it's similar to, in some ways, it'll be similar to city and county debt, but it's of a different nature, and I think they would be, have an interest in diversifying their, their interest in the debt because it's of a new quality. Paul and I are here to answer any questions you guys might have about the schedule.
All right. Is there, is there anyone at the day that has a question? No? Thank you, gentlemen, very much for being here this evening.
Thank you.
And thank you for your excellent work. All right, that takes us to our budget items. Is that right? Yes. 11 and 12. Well, let's start with item 11, Mr. Lange. FY 2013 operating budget amendment.
Right. Item 11 is to seek board approval for an operating expense budget amendment. This year, Via is coming in on budget with operating expenses. We should come in slightly below budget, except for a recommended $2.7 million that we would like to add to the budget for the sake of paying some pension expense, primarily for the sake of paying some pension expense in FY 13 that otherwise would have been paid in FY 14. And in your memo, there's details of that. I'll briefly give you the breakout of that. That 2.7 is comprised of $2 million, which would otherwise have to be paid in FY 14, and we had strong sales tax revenue this year, so it makes sense to pay that this year. And then the other $700,000 is broken into two pieces. $600,000 of it is the amount by which we were underbudgeted relative to what the actuarial, actuarially determined ARC or annual required contribution actually came out to, which was subsequent to the budget approval. And so that was $600,000 higher. We want to cover that. And then the remaining $100,000 is for the contributions in FY 13 to the new defined contribution plan, which was recently approved by the board, and to cover the last few months of the year on that. That was an action that Via took to help control future pension costs, new employees hired on or after January 1st, 2012, go into a defined contribution plan rather than a defined benefit plan. And so, again, the action item that we're requesting is that the board seeks, or excuse me, that the board approves that $2.7 million. And there are other details in the cover memo. If you want me to get into any of those details, I'll be glad to do that. We do have our actuary here, again, to address any specific pension-related questions.
Are there any questions? Do we need to take action on this? A motion, please?
Move. Second.
Mr. Martin and Dr. G, Mr. Martin moves and Dr. Gambetta seconds. Any discussion at all? All in favor? None opposed? One abstention? Ms. Thompson? Thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 12, and we don't want to risk losing our quorum, so we still have some items we've got to take care of. So, Mr. Lange, fiscal year 2014 budget and five-year financial plan.
I believe this is the right item right here. I will keep this very brief. I'm going to cover the first three slides in this presentation. The other slides are included for your reference. I want to mention that we did present the budget to the board at a workshop on August 14th as well as September 27th. The changes that were made since the special board meeting on the 17th included three main changes, or three changes. One was $65,000 was added to the operating expense budget for shelter maintenance in a downtown public improvement district. We made two cost-neutral adjustments. Those were to Via Care and to workers' comp. And then finally, we bumped up fare box revenue, added 1.1 million to that, and so those are the changes. The budget was presented to the board in individual meetings with some board members. It was offered to all. And then in September, we did provide to the board responses to the parking lot, as we called it, ideas from the August board meeting, as well as responses to any questions that were raised in the individual board member briefings. Want to mention as well, although I don't have it up here, that there was a public hearing held on September 19th, and at that hearing, we had three citizens that showed up, one citizen to be heard, and then there was a fourth one who came, and when that individual found out it wasn't a meeting on streetcars, that person left. The revenue budget for FY 14 that we are proposing is $208.6 million roughly, and you can see there that sales taxes comprise about 74% of that amount, and the remainder of it is essentially split between passenger fares and grant revenues, with the other sliver of the pie being just, just over 1.5%. That is an increase of 3.6% from the 2013 forecast. If we look at the operating expense budget, it's showing a 3.2% increase from the 2013 forecast, and comes in at, for FY 14, $185.3 million roughly, of which about half is labor. Of course, we're in the business of providing transit services, and so we spend a lot of money on operator labor. And then fuel and lubricants and non-wage fringes are our other largest pieces of the pie, followed by purchased transportation. And then finally, the last slide that I'll cover is what is in the resolution that we're asking the board to pass, and that is the detailed breakout of the budget, split between the MTA and ATD, and showing it by service category. You'll note that line service accounts for about $146 million of the $185 million budget. Next largest item is Via Trans at about $34 million. And so together, those two line items account for $180 million, or 97.3% of the budget. And then the remaining money that we have is for the various other types of service that are shown. And I want to mention that there is, again, some information at the back on budget outcomes, budget initiatives, and some detailed budget figures, but this is all I plan to cover, unless you have any questions or want me to get into any more detail. But we are asking the board to approve this FY 14 operating expense budget.
All right. Do you have a motion for the budget? Second? Motion, Mr. Lee, second, Mr. Martin. Are there any questions? Comments from the board?
Mr. Lange, we have a large, I'm going to turn, we have a large Via Trans budget, and this is percentage as well. What would be the impact, or Mr. Arndt, the impact of streetcar when it becomes operational on the escalation of the Via Trans budget, or the, since it is so highly accessible? Any thoughts on that?
I would not expect to have a substantial impact on Via Trans budget. Via Trans trips tend to be longer in nature than, than streetcar trips. So while I do think that those people that use the accessible portion of the fixed-rhubus service will certainly benefit substantially, I think the Via Trans market, I wouldn't expect a very large impact.
Are there any other questions or comments? I'd just like to say, as usual, excellent job, and I know this is always a challenge, but I think as, as always, it's, you've handled it very well, and the processes have been good.
Thanks, I appreciate it. It's really the staff working for me that does outstanding work and really ties down all the numbers, and I just kind of report.
Please pass that on to your staff.
Okay.
All in favor of the 20, this fiscal year, 2013, 14 budget?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, we have a budget. Okay. Hang in there, guys, a couple more items. We need to do a cleanup item, if you'll bear with me here for a second. An item found its way to the consent agenda, of which I personally have an affidavit of recusal on file. So I need, we need two steps here, or three steps. I'm going to ask Mr. Lee for his help in this. First, we need to, we need to pull for reconsideration the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And then I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Lee to handle the remaining steps to pull the item into heaven.
Motion for the consent agenda excluding item J, Ellis Alley. Do we have a motion approved? Motion by Mr. Ponik?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. All those in favor?
Aye.
Now, could we have a motion for item J?
Move to approve item J.
Motion by Mr. Miller, second by Mr. Ponik. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Did we do that right, Bonnie? Frank, thank you. Okay. Thank you for your patience. Is there any legal briefing? Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn the, before you.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we are adjourned from our regular board meeting, but we do need to do our Advanced Transportation District Board meeting, so I'd like to call to order the ATD. Are there any announcements, Mr. Arndt?
No, there are not.
Okay. We also have a consent agenda. Let me make sure that items did not find its way on there.
Move for approval of consent agenda, withstand any correction.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item four is the budget, no, the operating amendment, the two items. We need to do those again. So item four, the operating budget amendment for FY 2013.
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
None noted for opposed? Item number five, the fiscal year 2014 budget and five-year financial plan?
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? Is there a legal briefing for the ATD? All right. Motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Mr. Ponik, second?
Second.
Oh.
I would just like to encourage anybody that hasn't seen the Advanced Transportation District Project Development Plan to do so, and Mr. Smith's dynamic presentation of it. Again, congratulations to you.
All in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
F. A. N.
Abstain.
All right, you guys, you're messing with us. All right. Thank everyone for their hard work, and thank you to the staff for your wonderful work.